Wait for me. Oh, I couldn't see you. All right. Do we have Ramparts online? I see him. I'd like to call to order the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners. Ten o'clock a.m. meeting of October 24th, 2023. At this time, please silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. Please rise for invocation and pledge allegiance.
Oh, merciful Creator, Your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for Your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of Your good gifts. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, ever to be contested or at all.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Here.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Here.
District Three, Commissioner Starkey.
Here.
District Four, Commissioner Bradford.
Here.
District Five, Chairman Mariano.
Okay. We have a quorum present, so now it's time for public comment. Citizens will give an opportunity to comment on anything on our future agenda item coming before the board and on other business under the board's purview. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comment from those who are here in person. Then we will take comment from those who have pre-registered for WebEx link and currently on cue. We request that you, when you address the board, comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or team member, but rather to the issues. This provides mutual respect between board members and the public. After stating your name and address for the clerk, you'll be given three minutes will be activated. After two minutes, a single beep will indicate you have one minute left. When our time is up, two beeps will sound and you should close your comments. WebEx participants will be disconnected automatically when their time is up. Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment today?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do. We have multiple people. I will call the first three. Pat Rogers, Reverend Jack Martin, and Leonard Lord. Good morning.
Good morning, Council, Commissioners. I'm sorry, I used to go into school board meetings.
Name and address.
Pat Rogers, 4838 Sunset Boulevard, Port Ritchie. And I come here representing both the organization, I'm a state representative for Protect Our Children Project, and also a member of Light of the World Church. I have two documents I'd like to submit for approval.
Move to receive and file.
Second.
All those favors say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And there's enough for each one of you to have one plus one for the record. First, I want to thank you for making the early decision on item C43, that you are no longer going to support the American Library Association. That is a very important step and it helps with what I do. I'd also like to comment on what Protect Our Children does. As, you know, we are trying to be a full state organization. Right now, we're in 26 counties. And our goal is to get the schools back to teaching real education so that students that graduate can do math, normal, regular math, can think, can be logical, make decisions, and not be told how to think. And in this instance, you know, we're making progress. But I want to thank you all for everything you do, and I look forward to coming back to other meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Jack Martin.
Jack Martin, 13489 Drysdale Street, Spring Hill, Florida. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I had the opportunity to serve for 22 years at Praise Assembly Garden Hudson. And I had initially come here to address the ALA issue two, asking you to rescind the monies for that. I was at a meeting yesterday for a group called 321. It's an anti-trafficking group. And a lot of the problem in our society today is the over-sexualization of children. And that's, the ALA is run by a woman who's an avowed Marxist. They focus, if you will, on the drag queen story hours and on queering America's libraries. We don't need an indoctrination like that in our school. We need educated, logical, real materials. And I commend every one of you. I'm not sure what brought you to change or to make that decision, but I have to commend you for having done it. We're living in a day and age where our children are being propositioned, basically, by outside groups. There are apps on phones that are very destructive that way. And so, again, just thank you for standing up, doing the right thing. Let's keep educational and not indoctrinational materials in our school. God bless you and have a good day. One more thing, if I can. I noticed that you prayed at the beginning. I've been part of Somebody Cares Pasco for years. I'm not in Pasco now, but I would love to see them as a group if they could be able to come and do the invocation at that, save you guys the trouble of one less thing to do. But thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Leonard Lord, followed by Nick, is it Morando? Morendo? Pastor, and then Pastor Troy Peterson.
Leonard Lord, I live at 9525 Sunbeam Drive, Newport Ritchie, Florida. Been here 73 years, a part of Pasco. Graduated from Elfr School back when the scripture was used and she had the big paddle there. Ms. Olson, she was, became Ms. Locke. So we didn't have problems in school. They did it God's way and used the rod. And that's what I want to share, you know? Laws have changed. Proverbs says that it's time for God to move because people have put His laws behind them. Growing up here, I saw as a kid that all the things that happened came out of fellowship around God's Word and in church. In Orange Lake, the years I grew up, it was all about the manger scene, Christ, Jesus, the birth, the hope. And we've gotten so far away. But I want to leave this with you. We have mental problems. We have trouble with a lot of perverseness. And 2 Timothy 1:7 simply says, "By God's Spirit we have power, love, and a sound mind." Power means by God's Spirit and miraculous things can happen. And a sound mind means we got a control mind. Love means that we're able to love our enemies and bless those that curse us and do good to those that hate us. But the only way the Holy Spirit comes is through Jesus. Jesus died for us and received the promise of the Holy Spirit that we could all have the Spirit of truth in us. So with what's going, I too want to address that if things in our library would raise a standard, the scripture says that things will get worse and worse. And the only hope we have is to go back to the holy scriptures through faith in Christ Jesus. We need true convictions. We need the Ten Commandments right there, that everybody stands up here convicted that there is a God. And we need to honor people in authority and we need to honor one another with love, not in stealing or covetous or backbiting or hating. And Commissioner, thank you. I agree. We need the conviction of those commandments up there for everybody that stands at this podium. God bless you and thank you for all you do. And remember, Jesus is the only King that's going to make Pasco the greatest county in the world. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nick Morendo. Nick Morendo?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Nick Morendo, Sun Coast, Pasco County. I come today to
Address?
6051 Cheers. You have an item on today's agenda, item C43 regarding library services and the library construction grant application. But I wanted to address another item related to this library system. We learned over the weekend that Pasco County has decided to terminate its annual $2,000 membership. In America's Library Association, as well as the annual $1,500 membership, and the ALA's state chapter affiliate, the Florida Library Association. And I want to thank you for your excellent decision, your excellent decision. The ALA, under both its current and past leadership, has become notorious in aggressive promotion of drag queen story hours and sexual implicit LGBT materials targeting children. So we congratulate you for cutting our county's ties with this radical organization. Thank you. A growing number of counties across the state, including Citrus, Hernando, Collier, and exiting the ALA, Pasco County's decision to join the movement will hopefully, and momentum will ripple effects in counties standing up and saying no to the ALA's radical agenda. And since we not have heard the Commissions address this issue before, we're asking for a verbal commitment from each of you, each of you today, that you stand by this decision and that you will not consider reinstating the county's ALA membership in the future. So I want to thank you and God bless you.
Thank you, sir.
Pastor Troy Peterson, and then followed by Kristin Kramer.
Troy Peterson, 8114 Leo Kidd Road, Port Ritchie, Florida. That's Light of the World Tabernacle where I serve. This is Abigail, my helper today. I do have a flyer for y'all if motion to receive a file.
Move to receive and file.
Second.
Okay, all those favors say aye.
Aye.
All right.
I was the only one. Did anyone else say aye?
We tied.
Do what now?
Do we need a vote again?
Do we need a vote again? Okay.
Commissioner Starkey is asking for
No, no, I'm not.
Okay. She didn't hear the ayes from everyone.
Yeah.
Oh, we all said aye.
I have a poll here over here.
Okay.
There were three of us. Or four of us, excuse me. Gary. All right, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Want to make sure everything's done decent and in order. We know our God's in order, right? God of order? Amen. You know, I'm also the Pasco County Director for Protect Our Children Project. And, you know, but I'm just really here today with the support of my friends to thank you, Commissioners, for rescinding, you know, the American Library Association and not bringing this stuff into our public libraries. And I just really appreciate you guys for that. You know, as I was in a prayer meeting this morning, really, this lines up with the word of God because God says He wants us to be good stewards of what He gives us. Amen, right? And, you know, I'm so appreciative of the staff and the county manager and, you know, everybody here because I see you guys, this move, as being good stewards of what God gives to Pasco County. And I just want to talk just briefly about the glory gathering, okay? And go back to our original thing. So what we're seeing is, originally, God gave me a dream, okay? And I've talked to you guys about this for a couple of years. And in that dream was that if Pasco County would acknowledge the King of Kings and the Lord of Lords in their county commissioner meetings, that He was going to pour out His Spirit on Pasco County. And when I hear pour out His Spirit on Pasco County, that's revival. See, and that's actually what had started a couple of years back when we did a We Cry Out. And we just did an event in Sims Park, you know, and we had the five events in Waterfront Park with the fire department and the police department. You know, the next one being Saturday. You guys have flyers for that, for the Harvest Fest, teaming up with it. You know, it's awesome. The kids come and receive candy with no tricks, you know? They just receive the treats from our police department. But I really would like to echo what Pastor Martin said. If you guys would allow, I've sent you federal law, I've sent you federal law from 2014 that would allow you Commissioners to elect Somebody Cares Pasco as chaplains so that we can lead in the invocation. And then we're just going to trust that God is going to give you wisdom and guidance and pour out His Spirit. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Abigail, want to say anything to us before she steps away? We're happy she came to be with us today.
Good morning. My name is Kirsten Crower. I am the chapter chair for Moms for Liberty, Pasco County. Address is 10506 Kim Lane, Hudson, Florida. On behalf of Moms for Liberty, Pasco County, we want to thank you so much for not funding the American Library Association and the Florida Library Association. You are protecting our children. You are keeping them from being indoctrinated against these materials that go against what some parents believe. And it is up to the parents to teach these issues to their children in a manner that is age-appropriate and goes with the beliefs of their family. So thank you so much. And the chapter is here to work with you on anything else that might come up that you would need advice or help with. We are here. Thank you. Have a wonderful day.
All right, thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, that's who signed up. I don't know if anyone else is here.
Is anyone else in the audience which should speak at this time?
And then I do have, I do have one person on WebEx. I have Mr. Christopher Trappuzano. You should be able to speak at this time. Mr. Trappuzano?
I was on mute.
Oh, there we go. We can hear you.
We can hear you now.
Thank you so much. My name is Chris Trappuzano. My address is 16324 Dubtail Way in Spring Hill. My comments also related to the agenda item C43. Last week, I sent an email inquiry about the funding of the ALA for Pasco's libraries. I was pleased to learn that the board decided to not renew that membership. And I would just like to echo the previous comments and say thank you. It's an excellent decision. Lastly, I would just like to say that I do plan on following up on the issue early next year to confirm that the membership dues were not paid. So thank you once again, and God bless everyone.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
No one else. Mr. Chair? No one else on WebEx?
Okay.
Just a general call since there might be somebody in the audience that didn't sign up.
Well, I've already asked them, but is anybody in the audience which should speak at this time? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. We'll move on to resolutions. Madam Clerk, please read the first resolution.
Okay. Can Kevin Gallagher please come to the podium? Oh, there he is. You're too young to retire.
Oh, thanks. I'll take the compliment.
We all feel that. You shouldn't be retiring.
All right, I'll go ahead and read the resolution first. Resolution number 24-014, resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, recognizing Kevin Gallagher for his 30 years of dedicated service to Pasco County and congratulating him on his retirement. Whereas Kevin Gallagher was hired on May 10th, 1993 as a paratransit operator for Pats and Stars, the only public transportation service that was offered at the time. And whereas during the year of 1993, the service name was changed from Pats and Stars to Pasco County Public Transportation, PCPT. And Mr. Gallagher continued as a paratransit operator. And whereas in 1996, Mr. Gallagher assisted the launching of the PCPT, limited fixed route service, and began his career with PCPT as one of the first fixed route bus operators. And whereas over the span of his 30-year career, Mr. Gallagher assisted the PCPT growth and the system's name change, several logo and design changes, the launch of the limited fixed route service in 1996 contributed to the US-19 corridor extension between State Road 52 and Huey Avenue in Tarpon Springs. The launch of the cross-country connector on State Road 54, the implementation of several new routes and electronic fare boxes on all buses, and the rollout of Saturday Transportation Service. And whereas during his career, Mr. Gallagher was promoted to Transportation Services Supervisor in 2013, overseeing bus operators for the fixed route service. And whereas Mr. Gallagher diligently and conscientiously provided services to the citizens of Pasco County and the customers of Pasco County Public Transportation. And whereas on October 27th, 2023, Kevin Gallagher will retire from the Pasco County Public Transportation after 30 years of loyal and dedicated service. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby expresses its sincere and grateful appreciation for Kevin Gallagher and congratulates him on his retirement, done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 24th day of October, 2023.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
You've got one on the line, so it should be a roll call vote, but this is sort of ceremonial, so I don't know.
We can still do that. We'll do roll call vote.
Okay. District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District Five, Chairman Mariano.
Okay, motion passes. Mr. Gallagher, you're too young to retire, so we go ahead and sign you up for a few more years.
I guess I have another 30 years left. I just want to say it's been truly an honor and a blessing to be an ambassador for this wonderful and great county that everyone has represented. And I truly have worked with a lot of amazing and wonderful people over the past 30 years, and it just gets better.
Yeah. Well, we certainly thank you for your service and really appreciate everything that you've done in this past 30 years. You've helped us become premier, so we really appreciate everything you've done.
It's been my honor and pleasure. It really has.
Yeah, it's our honor, yeah.
And in looking at this, it says that when you came here and everyone heard it, our transportation program was called Pats and Stars?
Yeah.
What is, I don't understand that one.
Well, they did paratransit door-to-door service where they just went to doctors' offices and they took people to the mall.
So I get that, so PAT was for paratransit? What was the STAR representing?
The STAR was basically the same thing, but just a different name.
It was just the name of our agency at that time. That's how they call it. But it started with paratransit.
Strange name. Does it really? I don't think anyone would know what that meant when you heard that name, right?
That's right.
But congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you. And if I may, I just wanted to say that congratulate Kevin for his retirement. It's 30 years that he served our community. I work with him very closely, so I hate to see him going, but I understand that, you know, it gets to a point that something better coming up. I just want to say also that Kevin has been working the early shift, the supervisory early shift, and his main function was always to take care of our bus operators, to be able to go out on the road every day, as well as the vehicle rollout every morning. 4 o'clock in the morning, he was there, you know, helping out. So I appreciate his help. He always willing to help out and walk the extra mile and do it for all of us. So thank you and congratulate you.
Ma'am, can you say your name and title for the record?
Sorry, I'm Nina Elkin, Pasco Director.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Waitman, you want to say anything?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Well, congratulations. 30 years is hard to come by as, you know, you started this job when I was seven. So so, you know, we've come a long way, but no, congratulations. I hope you have a fantastic retirement and whatever your future endeavors you have, I hope they're just as successful as your last 30 years. So thank you for your service to our county and being a part of, you know, making Pasco a great place to live, work, and play.
Well, I couldn't have done it without everybody. So, like I said, I've worked with a lot of amazing people over 30 years, and it's people like yourselves that makes this great county the way it is today.
Yeah, thank you. Would you like to join me down below and take a picture?
All right.
I will.
Maybe it's in the lights here.
Okay, you'll read the second resolution.
Yes.
I think this is talking about family. If you'll come forward.
I think so. Vincent Salzano, please approach the podium.
Come on, Mom and Dad.
Look at all those merit badges.
We're talking about the family also, which all are part of our family, so.
All right, I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution number 24-015, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida congratulating Vincent Salzano on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. Whereas Vincent Salzano, the son of senior assistant county attorneys Anthony Salzano and Elizabeth Blair of the Pasco County Attorney's Office, is 17 years old and a senior at River Ridge High School, active in the River Ridge Air Force Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, the robotics team, St. Thomas Aquinas Roman Catholic Church's Life Teen Youth Ministry Organization, that is a long title, and is currently pursuing an FAA pilot license. Wow, that's fantastic, private pilot's license, with aspirations to become a pilot in the United States Air Force or an aviator in the U.S. Navy. And whereas in 2015, Vincent joined the great PAC 7 as a, is it a Weebalose? Okay. Cub Scout and crossed over a Boy Scout, two Boy Scout troop, 177, two years later. And whereas as a member of Troop 177, Vincent has held the positions of Assistant Patrol Leader, Patrol Leader, Chaplain's Aid, Assistant Senior Patrol Leader, Senior Patrol Leader, Tour Guide, Order of the Arrow Representative, Instructor, Den Chief, and now as a Junior Assistant Scout Master. And whereas Vincent has been elected to serve in several prominent leadership roles. In 2021, he participated in a backpacking trek at the Philmont Scout Ranch in New Mexico, where he was elected to serve as crew leader. In 2022, where he again was elected to serve as crew leader at the Florida National High Adventure Sea Base. And most recently, at the 2023 National Jamboree at Summit Betchel, where Vincent was elected to serve as Senior Patrol Leader. And whereas Vincent obtained certification in Boy Scouts National Youth Leadership Training and was inducted into the Order of the Arrow, Scouting's National Honor Society in 2019. And whereas Vincent participated in numerous community service projects with Troop 177, including annual coastal cleanups at Ankle Gulf Park, Metropolitan Ministries, the Newport Ritchie Patriot Day Memorial Ceremony, and numerous other environmental projects. And whereas to earn the rank of Eagle Scout, a scout must obtain at least 21 merit badges, fulfill leadership roles, display outdoor skills, demonstrate by example the scout oath and law, and complete the comprehensive service project in the community. Vincent has thus far earned 44 badges. And whereas for his Eagle Scout project, Vincent led the construction of a fire circle, a gaga bowl pit? A gaga bowl, oh, gaga ball, okay, gaga ball pit, and the rehabilitation of both a volleyball court and a prayer garden. His project was supported by numerous friends, scout families, and community members and local businesses. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby congratulates Vincent Salzano in achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 24th day of October, 2023.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call vote.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Bradford. District Four, Commissioner Bradford. District Five, Chairman Mariano.
Okay. Motion passes. Welcome.
Thank you, sir.
I guess you ought to tell your story.
All righty. Well, first of all, I want to say it's a, it's a great honor to.
Well, listen, this is my sponsor, so let me start. My gosh, is that a resume? And I was sitting here counting his merit badges there, and I, I got way past 21. Was it 21 that you required and you, what, doubled it?
Yes, about there, yeah.
So I'm, I'm really honored to be your sponsor. And I'm sorry I couldn't make it to your event at the Wilderness Park, but we're, we are also very proud of you, just like your parents. I told your parents I have two Eagle Scouts in my family, so I know what you go through, and I know what that ceremony's like when you get it too. At least for ours, it was really long. But what a, what a, what an interesting future I think you're on the way to have. And like many here, we're hoping it's Air Force. I have, I have two Air Force pilots in my family. I know we got a Navy over there, but not pil, they're not pilots. Mine are pilots. So I just say congratulations, a great job. And parents, what a great job you're doing too. We, you know, in this day and age, to see parents like this and kids like this, it's really, it's really wonderful to see. I have great, gives me great hope for our future. I'm sure that other commissioners want to say something.
Thank you, Chair. Well, Vincent, when you stood up there, I saw two county attorneys on your six. I thought, ooh. Anyway, no, congratulations to you. You know, as you, as you go through your life, your parents have done a good job of teaching you a foundation of faith, professionalism, responsibility, and that being ingrained in you in the Scouts. And that foundation, I hope, will lead you to a very successful life and help you lead your family in the future and in your career. So keep up the good work. We're proud of you. You're a model. And Mom and Dad, good job, good work, and congratulations to you guys as well.
Mr. Bradford?
Congratulations on the great achievement. You should be very proud. Your parents have done an outstanding job of instilling faith in the things that are important. I did think you said you wanted to do the Air Force or the Navy. I'm kind of partial to the Navy. I have a Navy. Sorry, Catherine. I got people in the Navy and that, so I'm thinking I'm talking to the next Tom Cruise of Tottenham. So anyway, congratulations again, and have a great day.
Thank you.
Okay.
So it's a.
Oh, you want to say something?
I do, yeah.
Take a picture.
You've done more. You've done more in, in your lifetime to this point than a lot of people do in a lifetime. So your, your future is really highlighted to continue doing that kind of work, because you should be in leadership somewhere in the future, and your parents, I know, are very proud of you. So thank you for all you do. And maybe he wants to say something.
Yeah.
Sure, I just wanted to say it's, it's a huge honor to be, be recognized with the rank of Eagle Scout within Boy Scouts, but even more so an honor to be recognized by all of you with this resolution. And I wanted to thank all of you for that and to thank Commissioner Starkey for sponsoring my resolution, my resolution here. And I would also like to thank just some of my Scout Masters I've had before in scouting, my previous Scout Master Scott Galley, and now my current Scout Master Christopher Morgan. I'd like to also thank some of my fellow Scouts in Troop 177, in particular the Eagle Scouts Theo Brooks and Andrew Raymond. They were huge role models for me growing up and were massive inspirations for me to get to this point in my life. And I want to thank my parents especially, and especially for my dad here for coming along with me on my journey through scouting as a Scout Master during my time with scouting. So just thank you guys and thank you.
Can I say, if my eyes were closed, I would have thought that was Anthony speaking? Anyone else hear that too? I mean, you sound just like your dad.
Yep, that's great.
All right, let's take a photo.
I just want to point out.
Oh, go ahead.
Hold on.
Commissioner Starkey, I can't help but remember the fact that you threw a baby shower for Vincent many years ago at your house.
That's right.
And that's when I met Trey and toured your garage and saw the aerosol pellets all over the garage floor. But I also want to thank Eric Breitbach, who served as the Troop Committee Chair for Vincent when he, for more than half of your scouting career at the Troop 177. So thanks, Eric. And he's kind of part family.
And I'm sure Parks Department thanks you for all the work you've done at Ankleup, at the Ankleup Park, so appreciate that.
Okay, folks, right here, please.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you all.
We got somebody behind us waiting.
Thank you.
All right. Great job.
I've got another one.
Oh, yeah.
I've got another one, but I think it's.
That's on consent.
What time is it?
Yeah, but I have a statement. I think, are you going to read it in title only, or what are you going to do on that one?
Which one?
I have a resolution on green light, Operation Green Light.
It's on the consent agenda.
It's on the consent agenda. Usually I don't read the title, but I can, if you want, we can pull it.
Well, I can pull it off, or we can just take care of it now.
You got a statement to make to it?
I do. I realize that the Operation Green Light resolution is on the consent, but I'd like to take a minute and recognize any vets that are here with us today. Please stand up. I know we got one there. We got one there. There's one over there. Oh, look at all.
We got one over here.
Thank you very much. So from November, thank, we thank you for your service, and from November 6th to the 12th, we will be lighting up the following spots in green for Operation Green Light, the Dade City Historic Courthouse columns and the flagpoles at the West Pasco Government Center. And I want to shout out to Derek Berger for working with facilities, and thank you very much, Eric, for getting this done. This is a national event that's happening across the country, and NACO sent this request to us. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Read by title, Florida.
Resolution number 24-016, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, supporting Operation Green Light for veterans in Pasco County from October through Veterans Day.
We need a motion.
A move to approve?
Second.
A motion, motion and a second. All those in favor, by roll call vote.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District Five, Chairman Mariano.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Motion passed. Thank you. I have a poll sheet that has, let's see, 30. Got this small print going on here. Okay, I have a poll sheet. Item C-36 withdrawn. C-18 withdrawn. C-31 withdrawn. C-45 withdrawn.
That's pull and revise?
No, pull and revise, excuse me. And C-95?
You got a.
A noted item.
Oh, noted item, 95 pull and revise. Is there any other items the board likes to pull or this time? If not, entertain a motion for approval of the rest of the items.
Move approval on consent.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District Five, Chairman Mariano.
Okay. Motion passed. All right, we move on to C-45.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Keith Wiley, Director, Parks Recreation Natural Resources. I have to do it since we just talked about veterans. Go Navy. We had to modify the phrase referencing an agreement. An agreement was not required.
Well, I have some questions. So I was surprised that we were able to fit them on the, the facilities there, because I thought that it was too full. So how are we putting the Little League at Starkey?
So we, so the item is for the tennis courts for 45, but we're talking about, are you talking about N-95?
Sorry, I'm looking at N-95. Oh, that's, that one was withdrawn, but yeah.
You want me to answer the question?
Well, I can ask you later if you want.
Okay. Well, we, we, we were able to basically work on a multi-party facility use agreement for, for that facility, so.
Okay.
Now, that was a question on which?
It was on N-95. It's in the notes. I'm looking at the contract here.
Let's don't take them out of order. Let's go back to 45.
No, no, we're not, we're not talking about that one, but I'll, I'll talk to you about that later.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions on 45? Entertain a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote?
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District Five, Chairman Mariano.
Okay. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Move on to N-95?
Well, that, that one's withdrawn. I think he's bringing it back. There's some Scribner error or something.
That's correct. We can discuss that offline.
Yeah.
Oh, we need a motion?
No, it's withdrawn.
No motion on that noted item?
That was withdrawn.
Oh, withdrawn, okay.
So it'll come back to you.
Oh, I saw. Okay, I got you. I was thinking it was pull and revise.
Yeah.
That's because I was asking a question.
Okay.
Messing you up. All right.
All right. We move to, resolution, where's my paper? Okay.
So. 47 is a time certain for 11. 48 is mine. I can go ahead if you'd like, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This is the introduction of the home, additional homestead exemptions that the board requested in their meeting in the end of September. I've prepared a proposed ordinance. There are a couple of issues which the board needs to, basically there are two homestead exemptions that are allowable for seniors under the, under the Constitution and the general laws of Florida, one of which is a $50,000 exemption from assessed value if the old, the, the person who is 65 or older owns their own home, is a permanent resident, and has an adjusted household income which does not exceed for this year $35,167. That is a exemption that many of your surrounding, the surrounding counties have adopted, though not, not all of them to the $50,000. Pinellas is at $20,000. Hillsborough is at $50,000. I believe Hernando was at $25,000. But it, under the statutes, it's allowable up to $50,000. The second exemption is a little bit more complicated. Only Hillsborough of the surrounding counties, only Hillsborough has adopted it. It applies again to persons 65 or older who have a, who's, and same adjusted, adjusted household income, but who owns a home with a just value of less than $250,000, and it has been their permanent residence for at least 25 years, that the entire amount of the assessment would come off of that property. What I've heard from, I have not discussed either of these with property appraiser and tax collector. I was sort of wanting to get directions from the board, and then I'd have those, those conversations with them. But what I've heard from at least one of the property appraisers in the surrounding area was they didn't, they didn't adopt that one because it's administratively hard to calculate which properties those attach to. But they are both within the statute and the Constitution, and the board can adopt one or both, up to $50,000 or any increment, you know, up to $50,000. That's completely up to the board administrator was looking at what the financial impact of that would be.
Mr. Cabala?
Yeah, in terms of the, take the maximum amount, we estimate probably approximately $3 million on the general revenue side.
I have a question.
Okay.
On the first, on, well, on either one, but how do we, how does someone, we don't have one that proves income levels. So who is the, is it the property appraiser or the ta, I mean, the tax collector who has to certify people's incomes? How does that work?
Like any of the.
Oh, you walked in just at the right time.
To answer the question, apparently. Come forward, Mike.
I just see that, I just see that being a difficult thing to do.
Welcome.
Commissioner, good morning, everyone. Jeff had the correct answer. I know Brendan's back here, but yes, it is going to be a lot of work. We're going to have to hire a couple more folks to do it, but we are willing to do it. I believe it's the right thing to do. I'm not on the board anymore, but I think with everything going on with, you know, it's the right thing to do, and we're obviously ready to do it, you know.
But, but like your jet, like the general homestead exemption, you would have paperwork that would require the, the person who was applying for it to certify that every year they have to come back in and reapply. It's going to be, it's going to be a big job, but absolutely, they've earned it. Pinellas, it's worked very well with them.
I'm guessing if you're a senior and you're not working anymore and you're, it sounds like these people may be just relying on Social Security?
Yes.
That they're, they just apply their income tax, their, do you, I'm sorry, I'm not, I know I'm past retirement age, but do people, people who are retired, do they have to file income tax return on their Social Security? I have no idea.
We still have to.
Okay, so they show you their income tax returns?
Yes, there's a process, but again, we will be able to manage that. We will be, you know, and we're willing to do that. Again, it's, if you remember back when I was still on the board, I know Senator Fasano brought it up to us, and we, we looked into it and, and, you know, tried to figure out the cost and so forth. So here we are again, but it absolutely, again, I, I, we're willing to do it if you all decide to go that direction. And I think our seniors have deserved it, especially the ones on the fixed income making less than the, whatever the amount Jeff said, $35,000 or whatever.
And I can't imagine that we have any homes unless they're fallen-down trailers that are worth less than $250.
Yeah, exactly. The second, I think the first option is the option.
Yeah.
But that's up for you all.
I, I would move that we accept the first option.
I'll second that motion.
All right, you got a motion and a second.
So.
Any discussion?
Okay, so.
So that's for $25,000.
So. If, if you want to go with the first one and you want to go with it at $50,000.
Oh, okay.
Is that the one?
That's the first, yeah.
The, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. So, Mr. Stein, Snyder, we can set, we can go to the, to the, to the cap. We can go to the ceiling.
Right.
But at any given time, the board could say, this year we want to do $25,000, or is it permanently set at 50? If there's, I'm just curious to know if there's flexibility, should there be changes in market?
You could, I, I don't see any reason why you couldn't amend your ordinance to lower it. There may be some political ramifications to that, but legally, I think.
I would start low and go high, then go high and go, then go low.
Yeah, I'm for the $50,000. I'm just curious to know what kind of, you know.
I think you could amend your ordinance, but it would apply to the. I think you could amend your ordinance, but it would apply to the following.
Year.
The following tax year.
Gotcha.
And, you know, like I said, there, there may be political issues with, with doing that once you, once you've granted it, but I don't see anything in, in the statute that would allow, would prohibit you from reducing it to twenty-five thousand dollars if there was a financial need, we found that there was a financial need for that.
Well, I'm for the fifty thousand with the expense of the world and, or senior population getting, getting priced out of here. I'm, I'm happy to support this, and thank you, Board, for supporting this, this, this opportunity for our seniors and tax collector Mike Fasano and, and property appraiser Mike Wells. Thank you both for, for your support and due diligence and helping us understand. I know it's been, been a couple of years to get across finish line, but thank you both for your leadership on, on this, this ordinance.
All right, I have a motion and a second.
So the motion would be approve the introduction of the ordinance to adopt an additional homestead exemption of fifty thousand dollars. Authorize the clerk and comptroller to advertise the proposed ordinance for public hearing on December fifth, twenty-twenty-three, at the West Pasco Government Center Boardroom, Newport Ritchie, at one-thirty or soon thereafter, as same may be heard.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second, roll call vote?
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District five, Chairman Mariano.
Motion passed. All right, we'll move, I guess, is everyone here for the eleven call?
I saw the tax collector walk in.
Tax collector? Anybody else?
Hey.
Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you very much for giving me this time to come before you. Such a joy to come to you in October. Nice weather out there, and today I bring you some good news, and I also ask you for an ask, if you will.
You always, you always bring us good news.
Good news, excellent.
But I think we're all on the same page already.
Yeah.
As you know, every year, I try and, actually, my staff tries very hard to do a good job by providing services to our customers. We average between fifty and sixty thousand customers per month in our five offices. We are in the process of purchasing some new property there in the, in the Angeline community to build another office, so we can accommodate the growth that we have here in Pasco. Like many of you, you've lived here most of your life, if not all of it. I've been here fifty-two years, and we've seen that growth. With growth, of course, comes needed, needed services. I want to commend you all for doing a great job and for making our county second to none in the state of Florida, and I thank you for that. So today, you know, when we, when we do our budget every year, we, we try and come up with a figure of what we think we're going to be able to save and give back to you, give back to our CDDs and other taxing entities that we have on our tax notices each year. So we had proposed that we'd give you back about two-point-four million dollars. We're giving you back today three-point-six million dollars, and so.
We like seeing that come back.
Got a bell. Normally, you know, when, when people come to our office and puts money, put money into our charities in the bucket, the bells go off, and so it's nice to that, that we're bringing you money, and your, your bell's going off here, and I thank you for that.
I didn't know we had a bell.
You gonna ring the bell?
So, in fact, the last ten years, we've been successful in giving you back twenty-four million, eighty-four thousand dollars, twenty-four million dollars. And, but today I come for you with an ask. I think what you've done is great for our county, fiscally responsible, trying to help our taxpayers. I think what you've done just now and, and going to do to help our seniors, we have so many seniors in this community that call us, and that they can't pay their bill. They hear that their neighbor in another county getting that additional fifty thousand dollar homestead, is it available for me? And I tell them, it will be one day. We've got a commission that's going to work diligently for you, making sure you get it, and now they're going to get it in a couple of years. One of the other things that, that I cherish as a constitutional officer is the great relationship I have with our other constitutional officers, with our clerk of the court, with our sheriff, with our property appraiser, with our supervisor election, and you can even include our superintendent of schools, although now a constitutional officer, Kurt Browning. Each of them have, of course, have to put a budget together, rely on what they thought they were going to get and hope they were going to get based on what they need. We have a sheriff that's trying to make certain that protects our community as it grows. Public safety should always be number one. We have a supervisor election that does provide the best, the best service when it comes time for elections. You know, when, when the elections come in at night, where does everybody look the first one? Pasco County, to see which direction Florida is going. There used to be a saying Jeb Bush used to say, where Pasco goes, the rest of the nation goes, on, on a night that it was being elected for a president of the United States. We have a clerk of the court, like, like the tax collector, see thousands of people each month. You know, since we're giving you over a million dollars more than we anticipate, and we were diligent to do that, I would ask that you would consider right now, right now, to make those three constitutional officers whole. I know that you had to take dollars away from them, as you did with your budget, but here's some extra dollars now that you didn't expect, to make sure that the sheriff can hire those three additional deputies to make, making sure, certain that our community is safe, that Brian Crawley can put those dollars back to what he expected to have in the budget originally, to make sure that he can provide the best service as next year comes about with so many elections coming up. And our clerk, who's already hurting for dollars, not only that, this office, the clerk's office, but throughout the state, can make certain that she has those dollars to give the best service that she's always provided in the past. So I present this check to you with an ask, and hopefully it may be with a, with a motion and a second, to use some of these dollars to make those, those constitutional officers whole, as you did yourselves. So with here, I'll present the clerk with the check and also some documents, and hopefully, before I go back to the podium, I'll hear a motion.
I would, I would make that motion to accept the check and to use this as a payment to cover the.
Constitutional losses, I guess.
All of our losses.
Yeah.
And the rollback.
Okay.
Yeah, I happily second it, and thank you, Senator, for being a fiscal watchdog and bringing, bringing some good news to us today.
Bless you, sir.
And proud to ring the bell in your honor today.
Thank you very much.
So second.
Thank you, Lord. So I have a motion and a second, roll call vote?
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District five, Chairman Mariano.
Okay, motion passes.
Bless you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all you do. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair.
May I say something?
Yes.
Senator Fasano, I just wanted to say, I guess, we have another constitutional here, but on behalf of the constitutionals, thank you for putting that forward. I greatly appreciate it. We will be able to be able to put that to good use to serve the, the citizens of Pasco. I greatly appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
I want to thank this board, too.
And by the way, you owe me lunch now.
I will buy you lunch. My treat. Yeah, I think I'll take the whole board out. Thank you, too, to the board of county commissioners.
Okay, we got, who we got next one?
And now is it Bill Cronin?
Yep. Is it forty, forty-nine? Yeah.
Envision Pasco, two-fifty.
You what?
Envision Pasco, is that forty-nine? Is that what you're calling?
I guess that's forty-nine.
Oh, okay.
Terry knows.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Natario Spito's Planning and Development Department. This morning, on the, on the consent agenda was the year four task order for the comprehensive plan update, and with me today, I have Chris Doherty from Inspire Place Making, who are PDD's consultants on the comprehensive plan update, and Hyatt Mizilli, the senior planner that's working on the comprehensive plan update, and I'm introducing them today in order to introduce to you the vision for the Pasco twenty-fifty comprehensive plan. Year four is going to be all about writing the plan, and so, or the plan update, I should say, and so this document will help us inform that writing exercise that is this year, and without further ado, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Okay, well.
Excellent. Good, good morning, Chris Doherty, project manager with Inspire Place Making Collective, vice chair, and commissioners, thank you for having us this morning to present to you the culmination of year three, which is the visioning process that you all have participated in, in the Pasco twenty-fifty comprehensive plan update. Make sure this is working here. Okay, what is Pasco twenty-fifty? As you all know, this is all related to updating the comprehensive plan. This was envisioned as a five-year process. We have culminated with year three. I'll go through each one of those years here in just a moment, but the, the comprehensive plan is your long-range vision for the, for the county. It is a required document by Florida statutes, and we're required to look at it, evaluate it every so often, every seven years or so, but this time it's a little different. We are actually bringing it back to the community. We're, we're looking to understand what, what has changed throughout the history here and the growth in Pasco County, and we need to address the, the data and analysis that's in the plan to make sure it's relevant for the county, not only today, but going into the future here into twenty-fifty. We want to look at all the opportunities that are there, improve the planning tools. You know, we addressed multiple topics in the comprehensive plan, whether it's housing, transportation, conservation, recreation, and open space. So there's a lot of, it's a broad document that touches on a lot of different items, and this year, we really had a lot of amazing conversations, thousands of touch points and conversations with the community, which has helped us develop the, the vision that you'll see here shortly that Hyatt will present to you. This document also helps us to make decisions on growth and development in the county. The nice thing about this is we can be proactive about growth rather than reactive, so that's all about this next year, so we can develop those goals, objectives, and policies to help provide you guidance down the road. So as I mentioned, year three, that's in the books. That's what we're going to present to you today. That's visioning. This is all about community engagement, getting out in front of all the folks here in the county and giving their, getting their opinions and, and ideas on what should change here in the county in the comprehensive plan. As Terry mentioned, the task order that was approved on consent, that is for year three, and that happens immediately, starting now, so there's very little transition. We're going to jump right into drafting the comprehensive plan, which is made up of two volumes. You've got your data and analysis, and then the gold, goals, objectives, and policies, which is that document that you adopt, which is the, the, really where the rubber meets the road. And then year five is when we're going to, we're going to share what we came up with and have folks give us their ideas and thoughts on the, the changes that we, that we are proposing in front of the county. So what did year three look like? We had multiple engagements, multiple presentations to different community organizations. We participated in community events throughout the year, starting with the Employee Appreciation Day, sent out numerous email blasts, newsletters to help drive traffic to the project website, which ultimately provided folks with information on upcoming events. The, we provided news releases or press releases to the news and media outlets, which generated a lot of really positive feedback in, in the, the news, so we had fourteen media mentions, two of which were in the actual news on TV, and then we were, we had a spot on the radio as well, on NPR. So really great coverage, generated over four, or nearly four-hundred thousand impressions, so that's eyeballs, ears on Pasco twenty-fifty, which is amazing, really good turnout for very little Pasco dollars going to that marketing budget, which is amazing. It's almost a twenty thousand dollar value, so kudos to the, to the PR team here at the county. That generated nearly eleven thousand visits to our project website, which is a huge number, over twelve-hundred surveys taken by our folks here in Pasco County, which is valuable information in, again, generating these themes that we're going to talk about in the vision document here shortly. As you see on your screen, we have these little summary documents below each one of those engagements. All of those are posted on the project website, which is pasco2050.com, so if folks didn't get to participate in any one of those engagements, they can see what we talked about, completely transparent, and all of that funneled down into the visioning theme. So as we show here on the slide, we had multiple interview, interview sessions with community leaders, community activists, and different folks dealing with development here in the community. We had focus group meetings that drilled down on specific topics, housing, transportation, economic development, resiliency, kind of those hot button issues that we're dealing with here in the county, and then really the, the coup de grace was our, our, our community workshops. We had eight community workshops throughout the county, nearly three hundred in-person participants, which was a great number for us, really great feedback, which, again, generated that vision that we'll, we'll show to you today, and I'm going to turn it over to Hyatt.
Thank you, Chris. Good morning, Hyatt Mizilli with Planning and Development. So the result of this public participation and public engagement is the vision document, which Sonia is actually going to be distributing to you. We call it Envision Pasco twenty-fifty. This document summarizes the entire vision and process and illustrates the collective viewpoints of our Pasco's community on aspirations, ideas, issues, and opportunities that impact the future of Pasco in the next twenty-five years. These viewpoints are expressed as vision themes and a vision statement that describes the desired future state of Pasco, and I will reveal those vision themes and vision statement in the next slide, but it can be found under the where do we want to go section. Other components of this document include the brief history of our county since its inception in eighteen-eighty-seven, and a snapshot of current demographics, housing, land use, and economic conditions. We also included implementation strategies that the public has suggested to us to realize the vision, and that can be found under how do we get there?
By the way, can you go back one slide?
Yes, ma'am.
We are trying to figure out where this was. This is North Point, no, Northwood.
Northwood.
Northwood, yeah.
It took us a while, but we did figure it out. Thank you, Commissioner Starkey. Yeah, thank you so much for that. Okay, so what are these vision themes? The wheel on the left side of this slide represent ten overarching vision themes that were incorporated into the vision statement. We reviewed an extensive body of public input to identify the common and prevalent aspirations, which we grouped into these distinct vision themes. For example, in twenty-fifty, the community envisions Pasco with more walkable and vibrant neighborhoods that are well-connected, well-designed, and aesthetically pleasing, a Pasco that values its beautiful landscape and fiercely protects the natural environment, and a Pasco that provides an adequate supply of housing for all income levels and life stages.
Music to my ears.
So I just want to mention that careful planning with these themes in mind will enhance the quality of life in the near future, as well as in the long future, for all of our residents. And speaking of future and planning, this is the vision for Pasco twenty-fifty. This vision statement will be the guiding beacon during the comprehensive planning process. It's something, again, it's something that was community-driven and community-led, and we are using it as a framework as we update the elements of the plan. We want the comprehensive plan to move forward this vision. Okay, so to conclude this section of the presentation, I just want to say that together the. So to conclude this section of the presentation, I just want to say that together the vision themes and the vision statement are like the constitution of the comprehensive plan that is setting forward the future. Thank you. And I'll hand it back to Chris to talk about the next steps in year four.
And as I mentioned, task order four is for year four here, and I'm going to take you real quickly through what we'll be doing here in the next 12 months. Well, as I mentioned, before preparing the data and analysis, so that starts with developing population projections and then identifying levels of service and whether we need to change those based on the community's vision for 2050. We'll continue to engage with folks as we work through the process. So we have several groups that are interested in participating in this process. So we have continued those meetings as well as internal coordination with not only our team here with Pasco 2050, but other departments and groups that are working on similar planning activities. So whether it's the MPO, or the strategic planning process, or the utility master planning process, we're continuing to coordinate with those teams on a continuing basis. We'll be updating your map series. Now, that's another part of the comprehensive plan that gets adopted as part of those goals, objectives, and policies. So your future land use map, you have the wetlands map, flood plan, those are all maps that need to be adopted as well. So we'll be updating those as part of this process. When we get to the, towards the, about three-quarters of the way through the year, we'll have recommendations for specific changes to the plan, and we're going to present those to you all when we have those ready. That way, you're going to have input on what we're going to be changing in the plan. And then at the end of the year, we'll have our update of the goals, objectives, and policies. Then we'll transition into year five, which will be sharing the plan and then getting feedback on what we've come up with. And with that, open up for questions.
Any questions?
Looking good.
The only thing I can tell you, I look forward to the vision coming to be true. In the past few years, I've been here seven years, so I know La Coochee, back when I first started, we were trying to get businesses to go in there, and WREC and a lot of stakeholders were interested in starting up businesses and getting La Coochee revived from what it used to be, say, 80 years ago, as one of the largest communities. The fact of it is, with four-laning of 98 and 301 coming into the north part of La Coochee, and also the rail that we have there, it's really going to open up, and actually that four-lane is going to continue on down to 301 98, and on to Pope County, and Pope County is going to build a four-lane out to our county line there on the southern part of our county. So it's really important to look and see what's going to happen, because you may not, seven years ago, you wouldn't envision there was all this business coming, but we have two businesses alive there right now, and you got another one coming. It's going to change the way that is. It's going to uplift that community to having good jobs and housing and things like that that they haven't had for a long, long time. So I look forward to that change. So, thank you.
I did have one question when I met with staff on this, and maybe it applies more to Zephyr Hills, I don't know, but it said, increase efforts to monitor protect, which, you know, we do with swift mud and temporary water, the water supply, but it says, increase the county's water supply. So that just caught my mind.
We're working on that at Tampa Bay Water. A lot of people think Zephyr Hills doesn't have any water, but they, the fact of it is, they have plenty of water, and we've offered them plenty of water. They just don't have any cheap water anymore. That's the only difference, because we have plenty of water. There's plenty of water available. And the Tampa Bay Water Board, we're at that board, I'm chairman of that board, we're striving to make better water resource in the future to provide that. I mean, just to give you an example, DeSau plant operates with the TECO plant, and TECO's been shutting it down back and forth. So that may change that water coming to the DeSau plant. In effect, we may use brackish water wells that go down 1,000 feet, and those wells will be coming in, that water will be coming in cleaner and at a cheaper rate than what we've been doing in the past. And so I look forward to that, because the DeSau is only 3% of the total water we use in.
And the most expensive water.
Yeah, and most expensive, but that cost is going to come down with the brackish wells. I look forward to that coming about, and it being more than just 3% of our total water volume. And it being cheaper, that makes, will help keep things cheaper, will get more volume from the DeSau than we do now. So, an ability to work for the whole year rather than just part of the year. It's all good, good stuff.
And I would add that all through this, our community is asking for walkable communities. They just, and walk, be able to walk to the stores, walk to restaurants. So we need to be diligent about that.
Yeah, I think planning department's doing a great job. Look out for those kind of issues where they're walkable, and most airplane, you see there's some kind of way of a trail connected to it or whatever. So that future of that is going to be good for everybody. So, yeah, look forward to the Orange Belt Trail coming to be, and hopefully it ends up a big circle, so the bikers and all like that trail. I'd rather have them on that trail than I had on the roads.
Oh, agree.
It's dangerous on the roads, but that trail is going to be very important to East Pasco. And so much has happened in East Pasco that hadn't happened in many, many years. So our best thing we can do is make sure it looks the way we want it to look. So, we, you know, guard that. So, okay, anything else? All right, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I give the compliments.
All right, I've got a time certain for.
Why is he standing?
11:40.
11:40. Have we got time for the? Pitch one, be quick. Okay, R 51. Oh, he's always quick.
Hi, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Justin Russler, Solid Waste Director. R 51 is an introduction of a proposed ordinance amending the Pasco County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 110, Article 4, County Sewer System, Division 2, Industrial Pretreatment Standards, Sections 110-151, Definitions, Section 110-153, Discharge Standards in Section 110-154, Treatment, Pretreatment of Wastewater, there's no funding required. So just to give a little background, Pasco County serves as the regulatory authority on behalf of the state and federal government for commercial discharge into our wastewater system. There was recent legislation that was promulgated at the federal level that we are required to incorporate by reference into our local ordinance. So that's what we're presenting to you for introduction today. And the thing I'd really like to highlight is it's no different than what we've already been regulating. This is just incorporating those by reference into the ordinance, relates to disposal of pharmaceuticals into the wastewater system, and disposal of dental amalgam from old fillings. And really, at a high level, the industry should not be out there flushing those things down into the water system. They should be contracting with a proper disposal authority to do that. So with that, again, really no impacts to our inspections, no change, just incorporating those by reference into the ordinance. Staff recommendation is to accept the proposed amendment to Pasco County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 110, Article 4, Division 2, Industrial Pretreatment Standards, Sections 110-151, 110-153, and 110-154, and direct the Solid Waste Department to advertise the proposed revisions for the public hearing before the Board of County Commissioners on December 5th at the West Pasco Government Center, or as soon thereafter may be heard.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, by roll call vote?
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Bradford. District Five, Chairman Mariano.
Okay, motion passed. Thank you, Justin.
Actually, if I could say one thing, Mr. Chairman, Justin steps down. I normally wouldn't do this, but Mr. Russler is leaving us for the private sector.
Oh, this gentleman right here?
This guy right here. But as long as he will be, thank you, Justin.
You need to come see me, I got to talk to you.
You will be sorely missed, but thank you for your leadership in the Solid Waste Department.
Thank you, Mike, and thanks to board and everyone, and we've got a really great team in Solid Waste, and I know they'll continue to lead the department into the future.
Well, you got to make sure you got a good person in there behind you and introduce that person to us before you leave. Okay.
Well, Justin, from one garbage man to another, you better not go too far. You're a dying breed.
I'm a garbage man for life.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you, everybody.
Yes, sir. All right, are we close enough to the? Okay?
I think some folks have walked in.
We're ready, y'all are ready. Mr. Engel.
Good morning. Board, David Engel, Economic Growth Director. I am very happy today to present a confidential target industry project for the board's review. The course of the item will take place where I will describe the project, describe the incentive, then I'm going to introduce Mr. Bill Cronin, the president and CEO of the Pasco Economic Development Council, who has a brief statement and also going to introduce some special guests. And I think you'll really enjoy the presentation today. The project is known as Confidential Project Global Brand, and we are going to announce the name of that company in a moment. And they are located at the corner of Sixth Avenue and Chauncey, Chauncey Road in Zephyr Hills. The property consists of 72 and a half acres. The property was recently annexed into the city. The city annexed the property to provide sanitary sewer and potable water service to the project. When completed, the project will be approximately 403,000 square feet and create 600 new Pasco jobs. There'll be two phases of construction. Phase one is 96,494 square feet, and the completion of that phase will be 2025-26, depending on the scheduling and the build-out. Phase two, which is the largest component of the project, is 306,500 square feet, and it's anticipated that that will be complete by the end of the decade, '28 to '29. We are proposing today to provide an ad valorem equivalency grant, that's a rebate on their ad valorem taxes, amounting to 25% of their ad valorem payment into the general fund. We had projected that over a 10-year period for the entire project, both phases of the project, it'll generate $13,300 directly into the general fund of the county. We're proposing to pay 25% of it. That would leave the county with a revenue cash flow over the 10-year period of $17,725,708. So right now, the property is vacant, and this is a tremendous gain into the general fund for tax revenue. The project is entirely delivered as a performance-based incentive proposal. Until they have completed phase one and received a certificate of occupancy, no incentives will be paid. And no incentives will be paid on the second phase until there's a CO on that property and taxes are commencing. So there'll be an overlap period, but we're going to take it as one project for 10 years and another project for 10 years, as far as the rebates. We're also offering a $100,000 discretionary training grant to the business out of the Penny for Pasco, and that money will be available to the company once they receive their Shell certificate of completion for phase one to allow for them to train and hire prior to the CO of the buildings. So at this time, I'd like to see if there's any questions, and if not, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Cronin.
Okay, any questions?
No, but it's exciting.
I think we're getting excited. We smell something in the air, though, something.
Well, bom dia. I'm Otimo Gia in Pasco County, which translates to, "It's a great day in Pasco County." Y'all knew I was going to say that.
That's the right thing.
So this is a really, really strong project, probably one of the more exciting projects that we've had in quite a while, originated south of here, very south of here in Brazil. So this, we worked together with the state of Florida and Enterprise Florida's international offices, we worked together with the municipality of Zephyr Hills, and of course, with our county and our county staff. This project is competitive, and when it came to us, we found out we were competing with San Antonio, and I said, "We can't compete with San Antonio, it's in our county," and only to realize that it was San Antonio, Texas. Texas is a worthy competitor. Usually, we don't mention our competitors, but in this case, I want you all to know, this was truly a project where people came together, collaborated, worked together, not just on the incentive deals, but some of the nuances that we have here in Florida. And for example, one thing that I know will probably be asked is, did the company and the landowners sign a voluntary deed restriction on live local? And the answer is yes, and that follows the deed of the property and will stay intact for the length of the incentive agreement. So want to make sure we check that box. But without further ado, I do want to introduce some of the partners that were involved with this, because it was extremely collaborative. And here with us today, we've got, from Zephyr Hills, we've got city manager Billy Poe, we also have council vice president Ken Burgess, and councilman Steve Spinna. Also, from our partners from the state level, we have Laura DiBella, who is the immediate, recent Secretary of Commerce for the state of Florida, and now is the president of Business Development for Florida Commerce. And I'm going to ask her to start and share a few words, because I believe she's actually visited the factory not in Miami, but also in Brazil, and can provide firsthand testimony of the deliciousness of this project.
Delicious is right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for the honor to be here today. Every day is an exciting day when you get to talk about a project that is choosing to not only expand into Florida, but expand into a different part of Florida, and in such a great way. So as Bill so aptly described, I am Laura DiBella, I'm the immediate past Secretary of Commerce, I'm still the president and CEO of Enterprise Florida as we wind down the agency, what's happening there, but very, very thrilled to be here and talk to you about the evolution of this project and just how we all really did come together to, you know, pick this apart and make sure that they stayed in Florida, because we definitely had some competition here, you know, heated competition from Texas. So I'm thrilled to beat them every single day in my job. We, this originated a bit out of our Brazil office. Our team, our international team, we visited Brazil, myself included, in Sao Paulo in March, in early March, and then subsequently came back and started to do, obviously visited with the company there, and, you know, started to do some real hard work as soon as we returned back here to understand what their expansion needs were and, you know, what would be the best fit for them, because obviously their footprint in Miami could not support what they needed to do. So it's been an exciting ride up until this point. The state obviously is participating on the incentive side as well, and our capital investment tax credit, and anything that the company will need moving forward. Obviously, this is a wraparound approach, hand-holding, where we work together with the partners, just make sure this project not only lands, but, you know, continues to succeed here. So I'm really thrilled for you all. This is really, really a happy day for all of us, and I really appreciate the Pasco EDC and everything that they have done, along with yourselves, you know, in getting us to this point, because this is really where, this is what makes our jobs just that great. So, thank you all.
Great day in Pasco County, and District One's growing, in case anybody gets it.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and you can guess which district is Commissioner Oakley's, that is District One. Things are happening on the east side. Y'all might remember, the county had put in some money towards sewer some time ago that actually is going to serve this area, and that was a response to our Ready Sites program, which actually was initiated by Duke Energy back 2015, so a year before I came here. So those seeds that we planted way back when are finally starting to take fruit, and there's a little, I'm talking a lot about food in this on purpose. So before, talk about more food in the company, I'd like to ask Billy Poe, the city manager from Zephyr Hills, to say a few words, and I believe Mayor Munson would like to be here as well, too, but she couldn't be here. So representing Zephyr Hills will be Billy Poe.
All right. Welcome, Billy.
Billy Poe, city manager for Zephyr Hills. City of Zephyr Hills is excited and appreciative of the partnership with the board, with PEDC, with the state as well, and with... with the state as well, and with, am I allowed to say the company name now?
Yeah.
Okay. And BDUCO, in the creation of up to six hundred jobs in the east Pasco, and specifically Zephyr Hills area. We're thrilled that BDUCO selected Zephyr Hills and our growing landscape of business potential. The positive impact of these job openings goes beyond providing steady, high-wage employment. It strengthens the fabric of our community by fostering opportunities and prosperity. Zephyr Hills is already well-known for water, skydiving, and tennis. Now with BDUCO, we'll soon be known for Pananones, wafers, toast, and cookies. We look forward to a lasting relationship with BDUCO and their representatives. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
So, and with that in mind, you heard it, we now have a company that's here to greet you, and I'm pleased to introduce Mr. Stefano Mosi, who is the CEO of BDUCO Brands.
Wonderful.
Great. Welcome.
So, good morning. Thank you. Thank you for having us. Well, this is the brand. I don't know if you recognize it. We would probably need to do a better job if people doesn't know us, yeah? But just to let you know who we are, we are a family-owned business. We are on the third generation. It's an Italian family that moved to Brazil in the '50s, and they started with a small bakery. Today, we are one of the largest bakery company in Latin America. And the family had always had a dream that was to develop the business in the U.S. They started with a small office in Miami in 2005. Couple of years back, we built our first facility in Miami. It was only a warehouse, then it became also a factory. Today, we have over a hundred and thirty employees there, but we need to expand. So actually, we worked, we did quite an interesting process that took more than ten months. We evaluate many states. Florida was always our state, because we are from here, no? But actually, we'd like to thank everybody in the community and the team and the development team, the economic development team of the state, the county and the city, because actually they made our life easy in terms of selecting where to go, you know? Everything was smooth, everybody working together, state, county, city, Duke Energy, TECO, the gas company, so everybody trying to make it happen, yeah? And I think today is the day that we can announce that we will start, yeah? We already hired the architects. We are working on the general contractors to start building as soon as we can, and I hope if the city and the county allow me to have the permit as soon as possible, we can start producing as soon as the end of next year. So we are very excited, and I would like to thank everybody for all the support that we had during this process.
Well, thank you. We certainly welcome you to Pasco County and District One. You can refer to me as Uncle Ronnie, and my office is open.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be good. Anybody want to say?
Well, welcome to Pasco County. I've been involved in international economic development for a while. I'm vice chair now, after being chair for three years, for the National Association of Counties International Economic Development Task Force. We had a nationwide phone call yesterday, but I couldn't say anything, because it was one day before, but very excited to have you join some of the other international companies here. Bill, is this our first one from Brazil? I think so.
Yes.
Yeah. So, welcome, and I'm very excited that you chose us, and we will certainly work hard to make sure that you feel you made a great investment here.
Thank you, thank you. And I hope that I will be the first one of many others coming to Zephyr Hill and that industrial park that you guys foresee to build, and I think will happen. Normally, when one company goes to a place, a lot of others follow later on, so we are like mushrooms, you know, going after each other.
Well, people are going to recognize your success here in Pasco County and being there in that industrial park. They'll recognize that, and they will be following you, so.
And one more thing, I would like to thank also the family that we are buying the land, that they help us a lot during all this process, and we are very thankful for everybody that was involved. I'm probably going to forget a lot of names. Tom?
Yeah.
Thank you also, Tom, that was always in all the meetings with us, and so, thank you.
I want to add one more thing, if you don't mind.
Wait, one may want to speak, too?
Yeah. Just to let you know that this county is very invested in workforce training. We have a wonderful training program. Some of those folks behind you, we're at our grand opening last week of AMSKILL, so we have a nationally recognized manufacturing training program.
I went to one of your schools, the Kegel and Ranch, yeah?
Well, that's with the school district? We work with the school district, but...
And it was very interesting to see that actually, that school and that high school, and all the work that they are doing there.
And there's a couple of schools in the county that have manufacturing and engineering and robotics training programs, and we work with them, but we'll, I'm sure you'll get to hear more about AMSKILL.
Perfect. Want to say something, Ms. Whitman?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah. Congratulations to the sellers and the buyers of the property. It all starts with the landowner and projects like this, and I commend the landowner in selling to an appropriate job-creating endeavor, and thank you for your willingness to make an investment in our county. You know, all the great things move north from Miami. My wife and her family's from Key Biscayne originally, and then they moved north up here to Land Lakes, where we met, so I'm glad you guys are following the right path, and congratulations, and we wish you tremendous success, and can appreciate your investment, you know, publicly enough. And to the Zephyr Hills team, good work, proud to call you guys partners and work with you guys, and excited to see what the future holds. Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Bradford, would you like to say something?
Do we need a motion? Okay, move to approve this wonderful deal.
Second.
Got a second? Got a motion and a second, by recall vote? Oh, roll call, excuse me.
Roll call.
Call, roll call. Yeah.
Let me recall that vote. District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two, Commissioner Whitman.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Bradford. District Five, Commissioner, or Chairman Mariano.
Okay. Motion passed. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We'll go down for pictures.
We've got a photo for y'all to sign, and there are lots of cookies and baked goods for the whole public that's here. So anyone that's here, feel free.
Congratulations, welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Did they adjourn? Sorry, who are you guys? You want to adjourn?
I don't know what they're going to do, because normally, well, they're not at lunch, and they would do old business or something like that in the last fifteen minutes, so I don't know whether they're going to, what the chairs desire.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe Joanne will just...
Oh, good.
Do they need to get back together to adjourn? I think they do, right?
Commissioner Whitman?
Yeah.
Oh, I always like these.
Oh, I never knew they were Brazilian.
Uncle Ronnie?
Yeah, that's exactly right. Yeah.
Oh, it's all right.
Oh, let's open one now. I'm going to open one now. Wait.
No, you're...
No, no, that's my, that Mariano.
Yes, yes.
I didn't have any breakfast, I'm going to eat one. Yeah? All right, we're digging in right now.
I'm trying to get the chair to back up here, girl.
That's my breakfast.
I have a quick question for you after we adjourn.
Okay. Did you, Terry, did you talk to them about that trail? I mean, they agreed that they have to build that trail?
Yeah, I'm in the process of getting them some visual documentation, but the trees are going to be, maybe...
Yeah. And the trail, and the multi's path, that yellow one?
Right away trail.
I'm trying to either get it or...
The yellow one, Christie was questioning, but we haven't...
Do you want to adjourn for lunch?
I don't think they were going to do that one.
Yeah, we're going to...
Okay, all right.
Let's see what they say.
Okay.
Just a moment.
We need to dig.
We're still signing that? Good day. I guess I'm the only one wanting to continue, right?
Yeah. I was just curious.
Let me have one of them. Oh, geez, I like these.
Okay, that was good. Are we going to Commissioner items?
Mr. Whitman?
Can you pass these down?
Huh?
You might want to read one. Wow.
They're pretty good, aren't they?
They're not money calories.
Yeah, I know, just turn, oh, I saw that piece off.
Oh.
Okay.
One fifty, but probably like...
A bunch of them.
Yeah. But, um...
I don't know. I was assuming it's from the size, but I think we're going to that.
I think we have a little time. We're going to start doing ordinary business. Mr. Whitman? Ordinary business.
Mine's going to take longer than ten minutes.
Yours will take longer than ten minutes.
Mine won't.
Yours won't?
I don't believe her.
All right, Ms. Starkey.
I'd like to nominate Michelle Chamberlain to the Pasco County Commission on the Status of Woman as my district's representative.
Okay.
Should I make that motion?
Second.
In a second. All those, my roll call vote?
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two, Commissioner Whitman.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Bradford. District Five, Chairman Mariano.
Okay. Motion passed.
Thank you. So I wanted to show you this Florida Community Contribution Tax Credit Program. This was sent to me by some of the folks at Habitat. This program, based on Florida statutes, provides a financial incentive of up to a hundred percent to encourage Florida businesses to make a donation towards community development and housing projects for low-income persons. The program is based on Florida statute, section 212.08, paragraph five, Q, and some other ones, and it says, "Who is eligible? Any corporation paying Florida corporate income tax or insurance premium tax, or a business that collects and remits sales tax to the state of Florida." It doesn't say "and/or," so I'm not sure what that means.
I can't give you that answer, but...
So qualifying company would need to complete a minimum of two hundred volunteer hours on a Habitat build. This provides a team-building experience like no other, and at the completion of the home, Habitat completes an application on behalf of the organization and submits that application to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, which I think is Department of Com...
Department of Commerce.
Department of Commerce, Commerce, along with paperwork, and after the paperwork is submitted, the qualifying businesses will receive a tax refund or credit for the entire amount. So I'd love for us to be a part of this, and our business community to know about this. It's another way to help our citizens, like Commissioner Whitman says, become homeowners. So I'll be broadcasting this out in my newsletter, and I hope that we can make sure that we all help spread the news about this good program and encourage our businesses to be part of it. Thank you.
Do we need to adopt anything to implement it?
I don't, I don't know. It doesn't...
Would you like the county attorney to...
Yes.
To review the statutes and come back to you?
Please review the statutes.
Okay. Be glad to.
That'll work. Okay. Mr. Bradford, you have anything that can fit in before noon?
Hmm.
I think he must be away.
I think he stepped away.
Okay. Well, let's adjourn for lunch, come back at one...
I'll say one more thing.
Oh, you'll say one more thing?
I wanted to thank the staff for the flowers they sent for my, in honor of my mother-in-law. Marcia Starkey was a long devoted member of this community and served on many boards and has a very special history of helping so many families, especially in the Odessa area, that were, it was full of underprivileged families, and she taught so many neighborhood kids how to swim, their mothers how to sew, their families how to bake, and just did so much. Of course, she was on the board of Morton Platt Foundation and was responsible, really, for the help with the Starkey Tower at North Bay Hospital, and was just a wonderful model for this community, and she will be very much...
Yeah, very much. Okay. Is that everything? We will adjourn until 1:30, or recess.